All right, we'll go ahead and call meeting to order if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom here, Ms. Lehman here, Ms. Lewis here, Mr. Nally here, Mr. Price here.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on from September ninth, 2024, please?
Oh, move.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally.
Here, yes.
Mrs. Bloom, yes, Ms. Lehman, yeah, Ms. Lewis, yes, Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved. Uh, moving on to legislative report.
OSBA did.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, did have some information on their website, this legislative report. Uh, obviously nothing's getting going for a little while, but this just kind of highlighted some of the areas that were addressed. Um, this past term, uh, one deals with school employee misconduct. Uh, there's some information on the John Peterson Special Needs and Autism Scholarships. Uh, some adjustments that had to be made. Uh, inner interscholastic athletics at a different school. And then it also addressed the ticket aspect of where there could not be a price difference between cash and charge. So just read it over. It's a good information. I think we've talked about these subjects several times, but it's always good, good information to refresh ourselves. That's all I had.
Thank you. Uh, no walk on items tonight?
No, sir.
Uh, no one here to address the community. So we'll move or the board, so we'll move on past that and go on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Um, this evening I have asked, uh, Mr. Anthony Walker to join us. Um, Mr. Walker is our assistant director of all things college and career readiness. Um, so he plays a very big role in our district in preparing our students for what comes next. Um, and I, he oversaw our, um, summer program for our high school age students this summer. And I've asked him to join us this evening and just give us a, um, piece of information so that we get a look to see what our kiddos were involved in over the summer in this program. Mr. Walker, thanks for coming this evening.
You. I have a slideshow here, um, here's a couple of slides and just take a few minutes. Um, as you know, the, or as you may know, our summer program, uh, was a two end of a, this is the last part of our summer program. It was a two-year grant. Uh, it was worth about 1.4 million dollars and we had both, uh, school time and summertime programming. This was our final year for the program, so we tried to do our best to kind of go all out and, uh, give a great experience for the kids. Said we have, it was almost like a three-part program. First of all, uh, all our programs since the beginning, we've been doing summer programs, we've had a credit recovery aspect to it. So those are the kids that for some reason or another are credit deficient. Uh, we encouraged them to go come in, they, they would actually, uh, use our edgenuity program. Uh, pass a class, if they pass the class, uh, we would through the program, uh, pay for the class for them. And there was incentives for them to get it done. So the goal is just to make sure those kids were, uh, could move on academically. The second part of it said vocational experiential learning, and that's our big program. So the, the whole program, the whole thing, uh, our program is based on giving our students experiences they wouldn't necessarily have. So for example, they, they've been to McDonald's, they've been to Walmart, they've been to even some of the factories that are around here. But there are some, uh, vocations that are out there that our kids may be interested in, they've, they've never experienced before. So our goal was to, no matter where we went, no matter what type of experience the kids would have. We actually, uh, would have the, the owner, uh, the HR director or whoever was involved, tell us how, uh, they could acquire a job. What kind of education they would need for that job? And, um, they get, if they, if they liked it, they could possibly get an internship or some type of experience with it. Now, because it was the end of our program and we, we had some, some students in the eighth grade going to ninth grade who had some interest in engineering, we decided to create an eighth grade engineering program. Now this is the first year that we've ever done it. Uh, and it, it was honestly, it was amazing. We asked some of our, um, our teachers to, um, help teach our, our eighth graders about engineering. And we had selected eighth grade students who showed the aptitude, um, in, interest in the engineering field. And they gained hands-on experience. And as we kind of go through, let's, we'll start out with the vocational. Um, each student that was involved in the program actually built and, and where it's able to keep an electric bike. So if you saw those kids kind of riding around, uh, they actually built the bikes. Now I will tell you that I, we had to fix them, but, but, uh, just be, you know. Uh, and it was, uh, you know, it was a learning experience for all of us because, you know, just because we give the directions, doesn't mean they follow directions. So, you know, they had to learn that piece of it. Uh, again, here, here's a point, here's the electric bikes, they're fun for the kids, but it solved the problem for transportation for our kids. Um, a lot of our kids don't have driver's license, even our 18-year-olds don't have driver's license. But this is able to get them back and forth to work. Uh, so trying to, um, eliminate that obstacle. Uh, go to bat, we'll go, uh, across Bass Pro. We were able to go to visit Bass Pro and talk to their, uh, HR people. And they were talking about different jobs our kids could get at Bass Pro, but not only at the organization itself, but also the vendors. And, uh, it was great, the kids actually got to go fishing in the ponds that are on the side, they had a great time. So he did a nice job for us. Forensics, uh, our own Mr. King, Mrs. King's husband, uh, did a whole forensic show for us. Uh, taught him about fingerprinting and actually we have some kids that actually have changed their idea of what they wanted to be. You know, they, they may want to be an investigator. Uh, we went from car maintenance and that's not only just their own personal car, but that could be a job that they would go into. Photography, kids were able to go out to some of the local parks and, uh, take, uh, photos and, um, and learn how to, uh, actually make T-shirts and, uh, with some of the photos that they had. But we went to Imagination Station, they learned two, two D, two D and three D art, sorry, rocketry. Uh, again, uh, some of our teachers, uh, from the high school from Ross came over, helped us out with that. Um, this is the cool thing, uh, here. Each kid in this program was able to build their own PC computer and take it home. All right, so through, it's all grant funded, but they were actually from the ground up, we ordered all the parts. Um, and we had a teacher, we had a couple of teachers sit there and show them how to build the whole computer. And now they have a functioning computer at home. Uh, I went to the Aviation Museum, Museum, uh, we went to, uh, building trades. Now, uh, our partners from Vanguard helped us out with this. And, uh, students were able to experience, uh, the electrical trades with Mr. Moreland, who you may all know.
It's Brian.
Uh, yeah, he does, he does an excellent job with our students and he brings, he brings so much more to it. But he was able to have our kids come in, learn, um, safety items, um, and learn how to, uh, not only cut wood, do electrical work, but we were able to use that stuff in those skills that they acquired when we went to Habitat for Humanity. So hopefully you saw that, that was online on Facebook, our, our kids were there. Uh, and I have a couple of pictures of it, um, in this, in this program for, uh, they were able to participate in Habitat for Humanity in, uh, house in Gibsonburg. Uh, another big one is 3D printing. Um, you know, it seems like everything is being 3D printed right now, but we were able not only to learn it here, but we also work with our partners at Tiffin University and they showed us 3D printing and how we can use it. And it could be used in the future. So that's definitely, uh, something our kids were interested in. Uh, COSI, we did auto detailing, that's a job our kids can get right away. Um, actually we, um, not only did they learn how to do that from our own Mr. Malo, but, um, they also were able, uh, to learn about some of the jobs they can get with our local car dealers around here. Uh, we went to the Fremont Water Quality Lab, which is probably one of the neatest, uh, experiences that we have. And again, with each one of these, uh, these tours, the kids learned about, um, what they need to know, the education they need to acquire, uh, to get a job there. Uh, zoo tour, we went on a behind-the-scenes zoo tour, so they learned about being, um, a vet and how to take care of some of the animals and, uh, some of the other details of that. And the other thing we, we did, and this was new, uh, we went horseback riding. And, uh, what we learned there is that, you know, there's a therapy piece of it. I did not horseback ride, just so you know. They didn't have the Clydesdales out for me. They have a big horse, but, but they did, the kids loved it. All right, so in some of the pictures, just showing some of these things, and this is just some of the things we, we were able to do. Um, if, and as you, as you look through the thing, the, the first picture up at the top, that's actually us visiting Mansfield, uh, Reformatory Prison. Which was a neat experience, a history lesson, honestly. Uh, for, for our students, they loved it. And you see, we were, uh, our kids were able to, in, when we were doing the building trades, actually, uh, able to learn how to run the Bobcat. Um, and you saw us boating. So we weren't done, we actually did pod perfection, uh, we learned about virtual reality, uh, commercial fishing, Ohio State Tour. Um, the Cleveland Aquarium, uh, each one of our students got their CPR certification. Uh, went to Lime Village, we learned about how you can cook with, um, cast iron. And we learned about just the whole village and that's a job option for our kids too. I already mentioned the Reformatory Kalahari, that was just fun. Um, University of Akron, we went there and that's the first time, we do college visits all the time. It was the first time we went to University of Akron, amazing. Uh, they did a great job for us, we went to Fort Meigs, uh, Ghul Runnings, again, another job opportunity for our kids. Uh, good time too, uh, which is ships and building and stuff like that, that was very neat. Uh, this is another new one, and this is the first time we actually got a chance to use our cameras. We went to the Cuyahoga Valley Train Tour. So if you ever had a chance to do that, it's a lot of fun, very interesting. And, uh, we were able to learn a lot about that train. And the last thing I put down there is ready for school. One of the things the kids, uh, were able to earn by the days they attended, uh, was a voucher for getting things ready, getting them ready for school. So, uh, not necessarily pencils or pens, but clothes, like maybe underwear, maybe, uh, personal items that they, that they needed to go to school. So they were able, based on the days they were there, able to earn so much money. And then that, those clothes, those items were sent directly to the kids. Again, this is all grant funded, um, and, but we thought it was a great, uh, great idea. And it gave some relief to some of the parents that, uh, that were involved in the program. Again, you can see them, um, they were put in windows, um, and, and they actually stayed, they didn't fall out, so that was good. Um, Lime Village is on the, the second one, we see, uh, they're doing rocketry. And, uh, they learn computer-aided design down there on the bottom right. Um, and, uh, from that, their design, uh, they actually went down and did 3D printing, that's at Tiffin University, uh, the bottom right one. So then we go to eighth grade engineering, remember we had some money, we, we selected some students that are really interested in it. So then we, uh, so this one was based on drones. Now we've always run a drone program, but this was an opportunity to get the kids, uh, have a hands-on training on, um, actually learning how to, uh, properly operate a drone, safely operate a drone. Yeah, uh, our partner, uh, Mr. Chambers, uh, came out to help us out with this, and I, I did forget some. We partnered with GL cap, uh, both in writing and running this, this program. So, uh, they were a huge part of this program. They are also able to do a bike build, robotics, we were actually able to build, uh, a robot, well, several robots. Um, computer-aided design, they learned that in the classroom, in Mr. Brennan's classroom with Mr. Hunt. Uh, they learned about 3D printing. Another partner that we just picked up, uh, 19 UAS Precision, that is a company that has an industrial drone, which you've probably seen some of the drones are, they're pretty small, some flying around. Uh, this one is huge, it's actually, uh, that's what they use to spray crops. Um, instead of, you know, planes and stuff like that, it's really neat, our kids were able to go out there, learn about it and see them spray. Um, uh, great experience for them.
Where's that company located?
Sandusky.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Um, actually the, it's a group of, uh, there are farmers and the, the son was really interested in, in drones. Learned more about it and I just happened to see it when I was at a, a drone thing for, uh, at Tiffin University. And, um, I saw this humongous drones, I grabbed the card and started talking to them and, uh, they made it happen.
I never knew that was a thing.
It's, it's huge, it's huge. And actually it could pick up, well, definitely could pick up a person if we could do that, so it was, it was really neat. Um, videotaping, they actually use the drones to go to, um, go and videotape. And, uh, there was a couple of, uh, locations that, uh, we videotaped, they were, learned how to edit it. And the, the companies or the, um, White Star was actually able to use that in their, um, will be able to use that as our advertisement, uh, for there, so that was really neat. Uh, they went with us to the zoo tour, uh, they actually went with us with their virtual reality and the commercial fishing. So it was, it was a great time, I think the kids learned a lot, um, they had fun. And, um, we're excited to, um, hopefully try it again. Um, you know, our funding officially ended, uh, but we'll continue to look for funding. Uh, it may not be a program this big, but, uh, it was a great opportunity for our kids. Um, and our parents loved it, um, and I think our kids, uh, learned a lot from it. Does anybody have any questions?
My, my question was going to be about the grant renewability, um.
Unfortunately, that, that particular grant, that, that larger grant will not be renewed. Um, what they did is they, they took all the money left over from COVID. And they put it in the pot and we were able with everybody else in the state, able to, uh, uh, write a grant and apply for it. And I think we were, what, uh, we were one of the only ones to get it. And we actually got two grants, uh, for that, both the summer and, uh, in the, in school grant. So we were really, really lucky, especially for, for that amount. Um, now they do have what's called a 21st century grant, and we've had that in the past. Um, we looked to, and they're, they're kind of reshuffling some things, uh, from what we hear. So I'm not sure if we're going to be eligible to, to write for one, uh, this coming up, it like rally around April, March, April. Uh, but we'll see, but we'll continue to look, uh, for opportunities for our kids.
We did write that 21st century grant last spring, um, with our GL cap partner. In anticipation of this grant running out, our hope was just to continue service. And we were not awarded the 21st century grant for fiscal 25. So like Mr. Walker said, we'll continue to look, um, for those grant opportunities because it's unique to have a high school level after school and/or summer program that is successful. Um, across the state, Mr. Walker and I have been told many times that that high school level, it doesn't work well. You know, kids are so involved and there's so many things going on and we have been able to find a population that still has time in their day, um, and is still looking for an organized activity. Um, so we've been really lucky, uh, our kids are feeling it right now without having that offering for them this, this school year.
Who's the lucky contestant who gets tasked with the grant, the grant searching and writing?
It's a, or all of the above. It's a collective, it's a collective party.
I mean, good answer.
We bring everybody to the table that we can and have at it.
Well, and GL cap provides some expertise with that also because
they are the clearinghouse.
They do a lot of, they have people that are on staff that do grant, grant writing, so.
Correct, we've worked very well with their grant writing department over the years. Um, and truly GL cap has been our primary partner, um, our community-based organization partner, um, for 25-ish?
Yes.
25 years-ish?
Easily.
How many kids participated in it?
Uh, we, it varied, uh, we would go from 15 to 25, um, active in the program because of the credit recovery. We probably around 30, 40 kids. Um, and again, um, during the school year, it varies too, depending on if people are involved in sports or anything like that. But I think our total, I think we had, uh, probably around 80 to 100 kids that were involved throughout the whole year.
What about the, uh, eighth grade engineering program?
Yes.
What type of numbers are?
We had 15. And we, we actually limited it to 15 because, um, one, we knew we were going to have them build bikes and we only had so many. And, um, we wanted to be, make sure it was manageable. This was the first time we, we were going to do it and, um, we had our experienced staff with our older kids, our Ross kids. So, uh, this was a new program and, uh, it went really well, went really well.
I, I mean, I've, I've heard nothing but positive things, you know, from the staff here and, you know, just community members that have been involved. So it's exciting, uh, disappointing that, you know, we, it's not going to continue as that same program. But hopefully we can get something going in the future.
Sure. And even after, even if we were, even, yeah, even if we were awarded the, the 21st century, it wouldn't have been close to the level that we were at. Um, yeah, cause I think the whole grant was maybe a hundred thousand, uh, where we were talking about, you know, several million. Not several million, but 1.4. So a big difference.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Thank you for you being with us this evening. Um, also within my superintendent's report, um, I would just like to, uh, draw your attention, I, I shared a memo with you at your seat. And this is a revised memo, I gave you a similar copy back in August. And just kind of gave you some thoughts in August about what this might look like. So we've firmed up some of those dates and some of those individuals that will be sharing information. So just to make sure that we're all thinking the same thing, we are in our final year of our three-year strategic plan. So what we would like to do is during our work sessions, this throughout this school year, we would like to be able to revisit our core components of staff, student, students, staff and community. Um, and be able just to share with all of our stakeholders, what some of those strategic objectives and some of those action steps have looked like underneath those core components. Um, so I'm kind of spacing that out, I've asked some of our building principals and some of our directors to be part of that sharing, we'll get some of that information. Each time we'll, we'll share a little piece. And then we will turn the corner into 2025 and we'll start looking at surveying some of our stakeholders. We'll look at doing some individual board work, um, that you then can present some information back to us. I can take that back to our administrators as well as back to our district leadership team. And then we'll work through that in the spring of the year. And my goal will be the last meeting in June to be able to bring back to you, um, a final draft of our strategic plan that will lead our district going forward. So just, this kind of just recaps that for you and hopefully gives you a lot of information. So in the next couple of months, you'll be seeing some of the principals and some of the directors here that would just share, share out those pieces. If you're okay, Mr. Price, I will continue.
Sure.
All right. Um, under our recommendations, I have, um, item number one, consider the approval of many donations here. We have a very large list, beginning with Don Brasky and ending with Carrie Vela.
Hey, can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
Slow move.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you, item number two, um, this is just asking you to consider the MOU with Anthony's Villa. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of information. Um, Anthony's Villa would offer our students and their families in the Fremont School Community. Um, this would be another counseling support option. So we already have contracts in place with Unity Behavioral Health and Family Life Counseling. Neither of those are new, we've had those established and they come on our site, they work with our parents and they're able to provide, um, some of those mental health supports, um, for our students and some continuity, sometimes between home and school, inside school and outside school timeframe for our students. Um, we do have some waitlist and we do have, um, we would like another variety of option here. And so this contract, this MOU, um, there's no dollars associated with it for the district component, um, would be with Anthony's Villa.
Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
Slow move.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Um, item number three, I would ask that you approve, uh, two foreign exchange students. This will be our two final foreign exchange students for the school year. We've had a couple already on agendas previously this year. Um, both will be staying with families in our school community, so if you would please approve Ruba and Billy.
Can I get a motion to approve item three, please?
Slow move.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion?
Uh, what is our max for?
Our policy max is six. Our policy max is six. This is numbers four and five. Um, I, I do believe this will be our, we will be final for this school year then. Uh, just as we, the longer we progress into the start of the school year, it becomes very challenging to align schedules and make sure that we can appropriately respond to the student.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Item number four, I would ask your approval for our Ross High School Varsity Softball Team to begin planning for a trip over spring break um to Myrtle Beach. This would be no cost to the district and this would be an opportunity for those softball players to engage in some contest um and some warmups into their season.
Can I get a motion to approve item four, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion?
Kind of what specifically are they going to do? Are they going to a college campus? Are they going?
Um, I believe that there are some preseason tournament play. Um, there's some opportunities that they've connected with um for some additional drills and pre-practice pieces. I am not certain if there's a particular college or university involved that's the center. Um, I do know that they're, when they propose after this, then they will turn in all of their field trip activity paperwork um and we'll see a schedule of what those activities will be like for when they're away. Very similar to what we've done with um our band or uh going to Washington DC or our Spanish students going to Costa Rica. Um, so we'll, we'll have a full itinerary.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Fabulous, thank you very much. Item number five, um, this is a large purchase of technology. Um, and I would just draw your attention that this is all of, this would be funded with our career tech um dollars that we receive. And these devices will be used to replace one of our lab sites here in the, at the middle school with our engineering um program.
Can I get a motion to approve item five, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Um, item number six, we have a couple of staff items here. Item number six, we have a resignation. Item number seven, we have some appointments. Um, individuals coming on board, you'll see a couple bus drivers there. We're very excited about that option always. Um, we have some certified staff substitutes and some support staff substitutes. Um, also we have some supplemental contracts. Uh, there and item number eight, beginning with Sherelle Liggins and running through on the next page um through Scott Havas. Item number nine, we have some, again, some supplemental duties. There's a volunteer piece in there. Item number 10 gives us some high school events workers. Um, and then item number 11, special event workers, we have a bus chaperone. Um, item number 12 is a little bit lengthy there and you will see that these are all individuals that will be supporting our new teaching staff in a variety of manners. Um, so there's the difference of dollar amount depending on whether or not that is a first-year teacher or a second or third-year teacher. They have, they, the state tells us they need a little less support in year two or year three. Um, and you will also note that those are the support of our mentors who are mentoring our novice staff, um, our general fund expenditures. When this state started this resident educator and mentor program years ago, some of you will remember there were grant dollars associated with that. Um, those dollars have gone away. Um, but in our district, we have always held tight to the idea that if we are going to make quality educators, then we need to support them um along the way. They have a lot of work to do in order to uh apply for their permanent licensure and there's a lot of steps in place. So um, those are general fund expenditures, but I think that those are very, very useful dollars um as we support our novice staff. Um, and then finally there, understaffed item number 13 is just a status change of one of our individuals.
Can I get a motion to approve items six through 13, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price.
Hey, moving on to Report of the Treasurer.
Good evening, everybody. Um, tonight, sorry, I'm a little out of it. My brain's still four hours ahead in the time zone, so it thinks it's 10 o'clock at night. Um, so tonight I've got three different items for approval. Um, the first item is for my staff to, most of my staff to attend a conference. Um, unfortunately, Jen's not able to make it. It wasn't that she wasn't allowed to go, it's just she had a scheduling conflict. So she's not able to go, but this is specifically to Treasurer's Office Support Staff. So these are gonna go over their day-to-day lives and it'll be with other um school districts in the state. And I really feel like this will be a good training opportunity for them and they can also connect with other um people that do their job and kind of get interaction with them and maybe get some contacts and um different supports that way. So it will be an overnight visit. It's a two-day conference, but I feel like we used to have, um, they used to have them in Perrysburg and they would only be one day. They'd have them regionally for um different districts in Ohio. And we always thought when the previous, when I was in payroll, um, all of us would go to these and we always thought they were very educational, very um useful in our jobs. So now that they're doing them as a whole state, I really thought it'd be good for my staff to go down. So they are looking forward to it. So if I can get approval for them to go to this conference, item 14.
Uh, can I get a motion to approve item 14, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion?
I, I think, you know, with um looking at improving uh the education of those individuals, I think is really important. And that's something I know that um there and I, when we had met um doing performance eval uh stuff with our, our treasurer, that was something we talked about that was very important. Um, you know, with the future to continue getting education that are gonna, it's gonna help that department. That's all I had.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Okay, item number 15, we have an appropriation. Um, this is just when we set appropriations for the school year, we did it 100% of what we spent last year. This particular fund um had some more funds available and they would like to be able to utilize them this school year. So we had to get that appropriation on the board agenda for tonight.
Can I get a motion to approve item 15, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion?
Can you tell us a little bit more about what, what the actual project is?
Project Attend, I think, has to do with attendance to get students to attend. This is a United Way donation. I am really struggling, this is not my world.
Yeah, I think I can jump in a little bit. And Mrs. Abernathy, if you have something more, please feel free to jump to the microphone. Um, our Project Attend, which is truly, it is our mediation, uh mediation towards attendance when students or families are struggling to get to school in an appropriate manner. Um, we have dollars through some United Way grant funding that have been gifted to the district. And sometimes those dollars can bring to, items to the table to support our families. It may be something as simple as an alarm clock. Um, because parents leave for work before child needs to get up, but child is able to get themselves up and move in and get to school on their own. Um, but just doesn't have the means to um finish that process. Purchasing that alarm clock could be in a great opportunity to help that family um and keep them out of court or help remediate that situation. So that's just one example, but that's what those dollars would kind of go towards.
That's great, that's great, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Okay, and then item 16, my final item on board agenda tonight is the general fund. Um, April or April, dear Lord.
So on our, on the electronic one that we were, that we got last week, 16 is not on.
It's not on there?
No.
Okay.
It's probably on our paper copy.
Yeah, it's on the paper copy.
Okay, so it's just the August financials?
Yeah, it's the August financials, which I
So we need to just, it's on the paper one.
And then it's not on the electronic.
Just make sure that
That it shows in the minutes.
Yes.
Yep.
That we added an item 16, okay.
I think, I don't know, she might have, she was gonna send out a revised one, I thought Gina had said, but
Gina, that slacker.
I know, dang her.
I didn't say that, Gina.
As I say, but she did have them
I think that was Don's voice that you heard.
So for the month of August, just some items to highlight for you. In the general fund report, it might look like there's a huge, not a huge, there's a decrease in real estate taxes and a huge increase in tangible personal property taxes. That just really is a different, we switched up how we coded tangible personal property taxes so we can track it a little better. So if you add um the amount that we received in real estate and the amount in tangible personal property, that would um equal what we collected for this year and that would look like what the real estate taxes were for last year. It's just we recoded some stuff so we can track that personal property taxes a little better. So it's like more of a coding um issue than a decrease in any of those lines. Um, you will see revenue has gone down in our poverty funding um due to a lot of districts taking um, how do I say this? Like taking advantage of that CEP um for the year for um the poverty amounts for schools. So that hit our economically disadvantaged line a little bit. So we did see a little bit of a decrease in that revenue. Expenses for the year, um salary and benefits, we had, or salary and wages, we had three payrolls in the month of August, whereas last year we did not, we only had two. So it does, you'll see more of a timing increase than necessarily that that's affected um by raises or anything like that. It's more just of a timing issue from this August to last August. Overall, we're still doing pretty well. Um, we do have a little bit less cash flow than last year, but we are still running kind of right where we'd like to be, so.
All right.
All right.
Anything else with those or?
I don't think so.
All right, can I get a motion to approve item 16, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to board member communications, Don.
Um, the only thing I, Mr. Walker is, is gone, but just wanted to reiterate, you know, what a great job I think uh they were able to do with those funds. And uh, I'm sure that, you know, we'll see a lot of growth in our students from that experience. That's all I had.
There. Uh, just a few things, um, just keep up the good work to all the sports teams. Um, everybody's working hard and it's so neat to see all of the things on Facebook and um different articles in the newspaper with what our, our kids are doing, not just with sports, but other things as well. Um, speaking of that, it's a great time to get involved with clubs and organizations at school. Um, I know there's a lot of, I get the, the high school um email every day with the announcements and there's a, a lot of things happening at um the different schools to get involved in. So I'd encourage all the students to take advantage of some of those things. Um, midterms should be coming out this week already. So keep working hard to keep, you know, keep grades up. Um, had a CQCC meeting this past week. Um, I don't normally say much about that because things happen how they're supposed to or whatever, but we just had a wonderful, um, very well-prepared supplemental request by Ms. Jessica Schurger. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that. Um, I think everybody who comes in to do that always does their homework and everybody is always very well-prepared. Um, but this was just amazing. Um, so I just wanted to give her a public shout out. And then Abby to you as well for running your, your first meeting and everything went really well. Um, the marching Little Giants have a big week this week. Uh, there's a skull session this Friday. Uh, the drum line starts at 5:20. Um, and that makes your heart rattle. I don't know if any of you have ever been to a skull session, but it's, it's a good time. I know they are um celebrating Mr. Colton Bach um with his 40 years as being the voice of the marching Little Giants. Um, and anybody who's interested, if you go on the music boosters page, there's a link to, I think they have a T-shirt um that they have created in his, in his honor. That's pretty cool. Um, and we, we are super thankful for Mr. Colton Bach and all he does for, for the music program in general and, and the, the marching Little Giants. Um, they also have a music festival this Saturday at Anthony Wayne High School um at 7 o'clock. Um, and last, I just wanted to acknowledge, um, we've lost a friend to the district. Um, Ken Dumminger's wife passed away. Um, the Dummingers are friends to the district, do a whole lot and have done a whole lot for our school district, um, including supplying us with Patty um who works in our uh main office at um the high school. Um, and I didn't want to um not acknowledge that and express our, our condolences to the Dumminger family.
Okay, Laura?
Yeah, my condolences go to the Dumminger family too. Um, Ken is, you know, is the one I know most out of all of them, but he's, again, I mean, just a, a friend of the families and a friend of Fremont and does so much for people. So yes, my condolences to you guys. Um, I want to say Mr. Walker um sneaked, snuck out of here, but he did a really good job and the stuff that they covered in such a short period of time was amazing. They were really busy beavers. They were really getting their stuff done. So yeah, I mean, I, he did, did a great job with that, so I thank you for that. And uh, I'm gonna go to a skull session. I haven't been to a skull session since at the old high school. So I'm kinda looking forward to uh the difference and, you know, just seeing something new. And I always enjoy going to skull sessions, so I will see how that goes. That's all I got.
All right.
Um, again, Mr. Walker, that was amazing. That made me wanna join that thing into
I wanna build a bike.
I know. That sounded, I mean, that sounded like a I mean, that would sound like a lot of fun, much fun. There's a Emily Barrett man. Congratulations to her on her National Merit Scholarship. That's amazing. That's, that's an accomplishment and a half. All the donations we've gotten, the two new foreign exchange students, that's, that's good. I mean, that's exciting. And all of our mentors and the new staff and everybody that's there to help the kids. And just everybody, keep working away at your school stuff because your grades are starting to come up. So.
Right. Like everyone else said, to Mr. Walker, thank you for coming in and giving us information on the summer programs, all the work that you put in, all of the staff that helped out, all the different teachers that helped out with all the different programs. And then especially to all those partners. I mean, we got to see the long list of where they went to see things from Toledo to Akron to Columbus to everywhere. So without all of those people and, and businesses involved, just showing the kids what's out there. Sometimes they don't get to see that. So thank you for all that help. The only other thing I had was it seems like everybody that I talked to that's a teacher or in the district or something, I always ask them, so how's the school year going? Everybody's like, it's really going great. And I'm like, knock on wood. But, and I know we're only, you know, half a nine weeks in. But that's a half a nine weeks where everybody that I've talked, I mean, there's always the little things. But you know what? If we take care of the little things, maybe that eliminates the big things. So things are going well. So let's, let's keep that positivity going and keeping this in the, in the good direction for everybody. It just makes everybody's school year so much better. So I'm glad that everyone is having a good year. Students, let's keep that up for our teachers. They put in a lot of work to help you out. So let's give them the benefit of the doubt here a little bit. So that always works well. So with that, no reason for executive session, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions carried, meeting is adjourned.